Thank you for attending Penn Trafford School Board's Reorganization Meeting for December 3rd, 2018. We want to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public fortress stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Leggo.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Bill Leonard is absent. Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo is absent. Mr. Nemick.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Mr. Leggo, before I begin, I want to thank everybody for allowing me to be the School Board President for the past year. It's a great honor, and we'll move to the reorganization meeting.
Before you do that, I just want to say, I personally want to thank Mr. Kachasik. He did a great job, definitely the best dressed, double-breasted Windsor knot tie with a teddy bear haircut, just perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi.
This is perfect.
That would be an extra good to use up here.
An extra example, that's an example.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that. All right, I point myself as a temporary chairperson for this reorganization meeting. We're going to start with the election of the officers. The Chair will now accept nomination for the Office of President.
I will now nominate Dr. Scott Koschko for President.
We have a nomination to Dr. Koschko as President by Nick Petrusi.
Second.
Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? So Dallas, now you may give me a second.
No, need a motion. Need a motion to close.
Yes, to close the nominations. Mr. Leonard, you want to give me a motion?
Okay, I'll second the nominee nomination, Dr. Scott Koschko.
You're closing the nominations? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Leonard. Oh, sorry, we have a motion by Mr. Petrusi. Oh, no?
No.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, we need a second.
Correct, need a second.
Close the nominations.
Correct.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Issing, that the nomination for the office, close for the Office of President. There are no objections, the Chair will conduct a voice vote. All in favor of Dr. Koschko for President, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Congratulations. Here's the gavel, it's all due.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kachasik.
You're welcome, good luck, sir.
Sir?
Yeah, I need a physical hand to you. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, the Chair now would accept nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I'll nominate Tony Issing.
Mr. Petrusi nominated Tony Issing. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
Motion.
Can I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Petrusi. If there are no objections, the Chair will conduct a voice vote. All those in favor of Tony Issing for Vice President?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Tony Issing has been duly selected as Vice President for 2018.
Do you want to take my seat?
I'm getting booted to the side now.
You gotta take your, you gotta take your sign. Phil left his sign behind.
I need my name, in case people don't care anymore.
Already forgotten, Phil.
I'm already forgotten.
Didn't take it.
Oh.
He's on this side. He's a cornerstone.
All right, welcome, Tony. Want to continue reading here?
Just a couple.
There he is.
Yep.
We now establish a date, time, and place for the regular monthly board meeting, Superintendent Information Committee meetings for 2019. May I have a motion to establish date, time, place for the regular monthly board and Superintendent Information Committee meetings for 2019?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Nemick.
Motion by Mr. Nemick, second by Mr. Petrusi. To establish date, time, place for the regular monthly board meetings, Superintendent Information Committee meetings for 2019, meetings we held in room 106/107 at Penn Trafford High School, Harrison City, PA, beginning at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted. All meetings are open to the public, any changes will be posted on the district website as below.
Question.
A question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Use of facsimile signature, may I have a motion to authorize the Secretary of the Board of School Directors Brett Leggo to use the facsimile signature of Scott Koschko, newly elected President of the Board of the School Directors, and further to authorize the Secretary to file the required documents with the Department of Education.
Motion.
Motion by Phil Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
To authorize the Secretary of the Board of School Directors Brett Leggo to use the facsimile signature of Scott Koschko, newly elected President of the Board of School Directors, and to further authorize the Secretary to file required documents with the Department of Education. Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Point District Legislative Council Representative and Alternative Representative, an alternate, may I have a motion to appoint Mr. Jim Matarazzo as the District's Legislative Council Representative and Ms. Toni Issing as the Alternative Representative?
Motion.
Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi to appoint Mr. Jim Matarazzo as the District Legislative Council Representative and Mrs. Toni Issing as the Alternate Representative.
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Did you adjourn though?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
By Phil, second by, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, at the organization meeting being adjourned at 7:11 PM, motion carries. Okay, now we begin our regular meeting for December 3rd of 2018. Leggo, do we need to still do a roll call?
We need another roll call.
All right, please.
And Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Bill Leonard is absent, Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazzo is absent, Mr. Nemick.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi, Mr. Stovar.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leggo.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2018?
Motion.
Motion by Phil Kachasik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, November 12th, 2018 be approved and presented. Have a...
Question.
Question being called for, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Dr. Harris, information.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. We're going to start off with our favorite time of the month, we do this once a month where we honor all our students of the month, and prior to doing it, I just want to give a big shout out to all my students this year because this past week, we got the test results back from last year, and Penn Trafford School District ranks in the top 4% of the state. So, we were number 22 out of 603, so it was great to have that honor, it was great to achieve that honor, and I thank all the principals and all the students and all the school board for everyone's support, and you might be hearing some more about that over the future, but I just thought that'd be a great way to start off today because it just happened on Friday, so, thank you. And for the students, remember, we have almost 4,000 students, and every year, we might only pick about 24 students a month, so if you're sitting in this room today, I just want to give you a special thank you because it is very hard to receive this award, and I just, and when the principals read everything they do, read about you, it's just amazing to see, so thank you for doing all that you're doing. I'm going to turn it over to our first school, it was Level Green.
I'm going to do Trafford Elementary first.
Of course, Trafford.
Okay, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Leanna Reeback. Leanna is a 3rd grade student at Trafford Elementary School. She is the daughter of Keith and Amanda Reeback, Reeback of Trafford, and the older sister to Colin, who is here in preschool. Colin should be joining us next year at Trafford Elementary. Leanna enjoys just about everything. She mostly likes playing softball, taking part in gymnastics, and has a great time with her Girl Scout troop. She loves being around her dog Sunny and her two cats, Tommy and Merlot. To relax, Leanna likes to read and color. She enjoys reading so much, she thinks about being a librarian someday. Sharing the joy of reading to others, she tells me, who knows, if I'm still in the area when I get older, maybe I could be a librarian at Trafford. During the school, Leanna works very hard in all areas. She excels in all subject areas, but enjoys math and reading the most. Her teacher, Mrs. Sipple, who's not able to make it tonight with us, she's, she had a little schedule, says that Leanna is one of the sweetest, hardworking, empathetic, and responsible students and a joy to have in her classroom. She was always looking and reaching for a challenge, wanting to make herself better, making sure she is understanding and completing her work to the best of her ability, while constantly smiling, thinking of others' well-being, and having a positive attitude. She is one of those students that...
Excuse me, Mr. Denali, Mr. Vinton just texted and said, would you please turn up your microphone just a little bit?
I thought I was talking pretty loud there, myself.
I don't think you needed it. I don't think it was all right.
There you go, Mr. Vinton. She is one of those students that you wish you had a whole classroom full of. Leanna definitely is a fabulous representative for the Student of the Month. In conclusion, I asked her what she likes about attending Trafford Elementary, and her response was, we have great teachers, and she enjoys being around all of her friends. I know tonight, she had a after-school program with the Crafty Shack, and she was a little nervous about making it here tonight. Leanna, we are glad you were able to make it, and congratulations on being the Student of the Month. (applause) Leanna, the District Administration of the School Board would like to congratulate this new student of the Month. Very glad you're the Student of the Month, very proud of you. (applause) Okay, Mason, come on up. Next, we have Mason Driscoll. Mason is a 5th grade student at Level Green Elementary. Mason is in Mrs. Brillier's class, who is here with us this evening. He is the son of Ryan and Heather Driscoll, and the older brother to Ella and Leva, who are both 3rd grade students at Level Green. Mr. and Mrs. Driscoll, just to let you know, having all three of your students in our school, you guys really do have good kids, and we thank you for that. Good family. Mason is a hockey player, a little bit upset, just got word, he had a game tonight at 6:45, but apparently he gets a lot of ice time, so there's plenty more of that, hang in there. He loves going to the ice rink to skate and play hockey as much as he can, and hopefully someday be a part of an NHL team. Mason also enjoys spending time at their camp. He says there are so many things to do, riding quads, fishing, and playing in the streams are all things he looks forward to. He said something, he said something about maybe this coming weekend, Dad, about hooking the sleds up to the back of the quad and pulling them all over the place. He says he really likes going to camp because he gets to spend time with his family. Mason is in his final year of eligibility at Level Green. He is an A student, he enjoys attending school because he gets to see his friends every day. His favorite subject is math, but lunch and recess are right behind. Overall, Mason says he enjoys everything about school because he just likes to learn. That was a good answer there. His teachers state that Mason works hard and always tries his best. He's very kind and tries to include students who are working or playing alone. He is always polite to others. Mason has a natural curiosity for both social studies and science. Often, he is the leader of his group during projects and assignments. It's a pleasure having him in class every day. Mason has no definite plans for the future right now, he enjoys doing what he's doing right now, and that's just being a kid. Mason, we're excited to have you at Level Green and wish you the best as you move on. Congratulations on being the Student of the Month. (applause) Well, parents, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Like to introduce Ella Morocco. Ella Morocco is an 8th grade student at Trafford Middle School and is this month's Student of the Month. She's the daughter of Heather and Michael Morocco, and the older sister of Chase, a 6th grade student at Trafford Middle School, and Chase, I believe you were standing up here at one time, is that right? All right. And Miles, a 4th grader at Sunrise. So, welcome. Academic accomplishments as a student is difficult to ignore. She is a high honor student, she has earned all As except for one in her three years at the middle school. It is obvious that Ella takes her grades serious, but is truly interested in the importance of learning. Although Ella is a strong student, she also recognizes the importance of being involved in the community and in her school. She's involved with the morning announcements, oftentimes taking, taking over when Mr. Y is not there. She's involved, and, sorry, is a member of the Bible Club at school. She serves as the treasurer for our student council and helps run our new school store at lunchtime. She has demonstrated a high level of leadership in all that she does. Quite honestly, I've never seen a young lady in our school that was such a go-getter and dedicated to her or her team's task. She takes charge, that's for sure. Ella is also a dedicated athlete and is passionate about field hockey. She said that she can't wait to play for the high school. She loves to sing, in fact, was asked to sing at the Mark Milvath Show this year. Is that at the Bynum, Ms. Morocco? So I interviewed her brother, interviewed Chase this morning. I said, so how's, how's your big sis? She's nice. And she said, he said that, well, he did say that, but he said that, that you often think of others before you think of yourself, and that's a common thread that I heard from other students and staff as well. The first, here's what some of her teachers say. The first words that come to my mind is trustworthy. You can follow that up with kind-hearted and extremely mature. Ella is not a typical, typical middle school student. For me, she falls into the I wish I had 20 of her category. I'm fortunate to work with her during morning announcements, she really embraces the opportunity to deliver the day's message to school. She has a great personality and truly puts others first. She often discusses her classes with friends, and you can tell that she truly cares about her academics. Another teacher says Ella is personable, well-spoken, kind. She has an exceptional work ethic, which translates to success in the classroom. She is always prepared and willing to help anyone. With all of these positive traits, Ella displays a humility and demonstrates a maturity not often seen in 8th grade students. Ella is one of the most expressive writers that I've had as a student. I will always remember her beautiful tribute to her father for Veterans Day. Sir, thank you for your service. She is kind, spunky, fun, and a unique child. Ella is an inspiration to all of us. So, little story about Ella, she volunteered to help decorate our giving tree the other day, and I go out there and she's, she's stringing the lights, and so, I said, here, let me, let me show you, first we got to turn them on so that you can see, and we want to start at the bottom, she got to see, I learn something every day at this school. So, Mom, Dad, she's ready to start stringing the lights anytime soon. Ella, congratulations on that.
(applause)
And lastly, we have from our high school, Mr. Koye.
I'd like to call to the front, Dallas Clark, senior Dallas Clark. She's joined here by her father, James, her mother, Michelle, and her older brother, Dylan. Thanks for coming and supporting her. I'd like to congratulate you, Dallas, on being named 2 of the Month for the high school. In addition to being compassionate, selfless, and honest, teachers would use the words driven, thoughtful, and always showing initiative while being resourceful. Her community service goes unmatched as she's a vital part of our community action program, giving up her personal time to always helping others. She's volunteered at the events such as the Veterans Drive, as well as the Haunted Hills Hay Ride, that gives the proceeds to the Autism Society of Pittsburgh. This is especially important because it leads to one of her personal goals after high school, majoring in Special Education at Seton Hill. She works extremely hard academically, and as a senior, continues to load her schedule with honors and AP English and social studies classes. She balances those tough academic classes out with her passion for singing and performing as she currently takes multiple chorus, chorus classes, two, three, I think she takes three chorus classes this year. This leads to her second goal of being accepted into the musical education program at Seton Hill and double-majoring in not only Special Education, but Music Education. Great goals, and I know you do, do well in those. Her love of Special Education and helping others can be seen over and over again by Dallas. I remember the day I bumped into her in the hallway as she was looking for a student with special needs. You see, the schedule was different that day, kids were kind of all over the place, and she took it upon herself to make sure every kid was accounted for and knew their way around the building and were in the right classes. Always thinking of others, that's what she does. I actually have a meeting set up with her later this week as she begins to plan stages of starting a buddy program here at Penn Trafford. I look forward to her setting, getting this off the ground, as I know it'll be a great program just to add to our building. Dallas keeps herself busy as she is also the bowling team captain and is part of the Drama Guild in school. Outside of school, she participates in performances at Stage Right, as well as teaching youngsters there with their performance classes. Her peers have voted her as having the most school spirit, as we've seen time and time again at football games and other events as a cheerleader. She's a true ambassador of our school, 2018 homecoming queen, must I say more? Actually, will say some more, Mobile Warrior, Nobel Warrior winner, high honor student, choral officer, and all-around great person. If all of this isn't enough, you can always catch your Dairy Queen where she'll make what you call a mean blizzard. In all seriousness, she's a model student and represents PT to the fullest. Congratulations to Dallas on being High School Student of the Month.
Parents, your kind of kids will make this sister praise. Congratulations and kudos to all of you for the other people.
We're just going to take a moment to get a photo for the press of all my, all the winners for Student of the Month. If the parents want to stand behind and take a picture too, that's okay, that's okay as well.
I thought you were actually...
Yeah, I will.
This might come for the...
Yes, we're just there. I have the...
So it's all good?
He had to give you...
Everyone...
All of the boards kind of were their meetings they had to do.
Oh, there's one coming.
I was...
Congratulations.
(inaudible).
I'm going to do Trafford Elementary first.
I'm going to do Trafford Elementary first.
Of course, Trafford.
Okay, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Leanna Reeback. Leanna is a 3rd grade student at Trafford Elementary School. She is the daughter of Keith and Amanda Reeback, Reeback of Trafford, and the older sister to Colin, who is here in preschool. Colin should be joining us next year at Trafford Elementary. Leanna enjoys just about everything. She mostly likes playing softball, taking part in gymnastics, and has a great time with her Girl Scout troop. She loves being around her dog Sunny and her two cats, Tommy and Merlot. To relax, Leanna likes to read and color. She enjoys reading so much, she thinks about being a librarian someday. Sharing the joy of reading to others, she tells me, who knows, if I'm still in the area when I get older, maybe I could be a librarian at Trafford. During the school, Leanna works very hard in all areas. She excels in all subject areas, but enjoys math and reading the most. Her teacher, Mrs. Sipple, who's not able to make it tonight with us, she's, she had a little schedule, says that Leanna is one of the sweetest, hardworking, empathetic, and responsible students and a joy to have in her classroom. She was always looking and reaching for a challenge, wanting to make herself better, making sure she is understanding and completing her work to the best of her ability, while constantly smiling, thinking of others' well-being, and having a positive attitude. She is one of those students that...
Excuse me, Mr. Denali, Mr. Vinton just texted and said, would you please turn up your microphone just a little bit?
I thought I was talking pretty loud there, myself. I don't think you needed it. I don't think it was all right.
There you go, Mr. Vinton. She is one of those students that you wish you had a whole classroom full of. Leanna definitely is a fabulous representative for the student of the month. In conclusion, I asked her what she likes about attending Trafford Elementary, and her response was, we have great teachers, and she enjoys being around all of her friends. I know tonight, she had a after-school program with the Crafty Shack, and she was a little nervous about making it here tonight. Leanna, we are glad you were able to make it, and congratulations on being the student of the month. (applause) Okay, Mason, come on up. Next, we have Mason Driscoll. Mason is a 5th grade student at Level Green Elementary. Mason is in Mrs. Brillier's class, who is here with us this evening. He is the son of Ryan and Heather Driscoll, and the older brother to Ella and Leva, who are both 3rd grade students at Level Green. Mr. and Mrs. Driscoll, just to let you know, having all three of your students in our school, you guys really do have good kids, and we thank you for that. Good family. Mason is a hockey player, a little bit upset, just got word, he had a game tonight at 6:45, but apparently he gets a lot of ice time, so there's plenty more of that, hang in there. He loves going to the ice rink to skate and play hockey as much as he can, and hopefully someday be a part of an NHL team. Mason also enjoys spending time at their camp. He says there are so many things to do, riding quads, fishing, and playing in the streams are all things he looks forward to. He said something, he said something about maybe this coming weekend, Dad, about hooking the sleds up to the back of the quad and pulling them all over the place. He says he really likes going to camp because he gets to spend time with his family. Mason is in his final year of eligibility at Level Green. He is, he is an A student, he enjoys attending school because he gets to see his friends every day. His favorite subject is math, but lunch and recess are right behind. Overall, Mason says he enjoys everything about school because he just likes to learn. That was a good answer there. His teachers state that Mason works hard and always tries his best. He's very kind and tries to include students who are working or playing alone. He is always polite to others. Mason has a natural curiosity for both social studies and science. Often, he is the leader of his group during projects and assignments. It's a pleasure having him in class every day. Mason has no definite plans for the future right now, he enjoys doing what he's doing right now, and that's just being a kid. Mason, we're excited to have you at Level Green and wish you the best as you move on. Congratulations on being the Student of the Month. (applause) Well, parents, thank you. 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 Thank you.
And I have to add, it was the first show with our new stage lights and stage curtains, so I want to thank you all for that. It was awesome. They were able to put together a little mini light show with the new lights, but it looked really, really good.
They did a great job, and you're right, it really made a difference, the stage. The high school band concerts, December 15th to 7th. So, we have a lot of concerts and opportunities coming up to be sung to and formed to, so take advantage. We have a lot of talent at Penn Trafford. The school calendar for next year, and it was on board to approve tonight, not really any changes because we pretty much follow the same schedule. The only thing to note is this year, December 20th is a Friday, so instead of having students come back on the Monday, the 23rd, we have it off this year because it's just the way the calendar filmed. But we still actually start the Thursday before, let me see, the Thursday, August 22nd, and our last day is the Friday before Memorial Day. And then some different policies that are on board tonight to approve, or tentatively approve, deals with policy 246, it's a healthy school environment. Basically, it adds more information regarding training for staff and students and promotes environmental studies to students. And we also have 704 maintenance, and this is basically the requirement for water testing for lead in schools. So, those are policies on board for tentative approval. And of course, I already talked about the ones that you're approving tonight, and they deal with school wellness, reduction in staff, child abuse, food surfaces, school vehicle drivers, drug use and alcohol misuse prevention, receipt of drug and alcohol misinformation, and reasonable cause, reasonable suspicion form. We kind of talked about that before because it's already been on agenda for a couple times now. And finally, for program studies, Mr. Koye, do you have the information for program studies?
Yeah, I do. It's really basic this upcoming year. I made some minor changes, removing three courses from the program studies. Algebra III, which is no longer needed with our progression of mathematics, seeing as you're taking the higher level precal classes or higher, or a business math, so that's kind of faded out. Our Advanced Studio Art III class, Low Numbers, kids who are really focused on art as a possible future, either gonna take an AP course or different types of art. By the time they get to Art III, they kind of fade out, so the art department's suggestion was to rule that out. And finally, Sports Medicine will no longer be offered, obviously with the retirement of Mr. Cooper last year. He was the only one that certified to teach that course, so we do need to eliminate that. Additions, Biology A and Biology B, it's gonna be our same course, just broken down into two years for struggling learners, for people who have difficulty with the PSSAs. Scores are very well, only see maybe one, possibly two sections of that course, but basically slowing down the curriculum over two years versus the quick response in one year. And the final other addition was the honors geoscience. A lot of our kids go into physics, chemistry, biology, those AP courses. There's really no honors-level science class for anyone that wants any other track within our curriculum, so we're gonna offer that, hopefully leads to some, to some STEM careers. Revisions, English 12, in the past, we've had it broken down into semester classes, so students will take one semester class followed by another. We're gonna just combine those this year, so they're full-year classes, easier as far as scheduling, and probably will help with the class sizes and staffing needs. Then finally, an astrophysics class, which we already offer. We've had people interested in it, but unfortunately, in this day and age, some kids won't take certain classes unless they're honors, so we're gonna revamp that curriculum and offer it as an honors course, tie it to some college credit with dual enrollment, to try to spike those numbers up to get those kids to take that classes. So, another course that we're looking forward to offering this year. That's really it for the program studies for this year, for next year, as you said.
We're potentially looking at some music courses, maybe?
Possible musical courses with some staffing changes in the near future, so.
I appreciate it, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. At this time, I recommend you visit us, which I do not believe we have.
We haven't, Mr. President.
Okay, treasures report.
None this month because of the earliness of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. At this time, we have, we do have some payment of bills. May I motion to approve the payment of bills for the month of December 2018?
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neemek.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Old business, Mr. Lego.
None this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. During, we did have an executive session today at 5:30. During that executive session, we discussed personnel, litigation, confidential matters, and school rankings with the PSSA and Keystone test scores. Once again, great job, administration and teachers, great achievement of moving up from previous year. Good job. New business, we do have a few things. Athletics, an extra curricular, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Dr. Costo. Move to approve the following personnel. New employees contingent upon receipt of all necessary certification documentation extends to Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Employment is effective 2018-19 school year unless otherwise noted. Phil Moses and Brandon Piles, as listed.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to accept the following resignations. Russ Bayless, Christine Falcone, Matthew Lego, Gregory March, Nicholas Padanza, as listed.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve Mr. Rich Skinter's request to take the wrestling team to two overnight tournaments as follows, and they are very popular tournaments. King and Mountain Tournament in Central Mountain High School and Power Raid Tournament at Cannon McCallum.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
So, I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Budget and finance, Mr. Phil Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to award contract for copy of Sacum Doc Inc. for 60-month lease at $7,396 per month beginning January 1st, 2019.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
No, not this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Buildings and grounds and safety, Mr. Dallas Leonard.
I have nothing for tonight under buildings, grounds, and safety.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiation, transportation, Mrs. Ising.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Ising. Food service, Mr. Neemek.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Neemek. Personnel and curriculum, once again, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the following list of additional substitute teachers and support personnel for the month of December 2018.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following personnel. New employees contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation extends to Act 34, 151, 114 waivers, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Tammy Hampshire, Alexis Newingham, Rachel Saxinger, and Jane Long, as listed.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following student teacher assignments. Co-op teacher, Ryan Dusick and Charles Gates. Student teachers, Catherine Haygood, they're from the, what's, what's called?
IUP.
IUP, I'm sorry, I missed that. And Seton Hill, the co-op teachers, Caitlin Borden and Lisa Knopka. The student teachers are Laura Carestis, and Laura Carestis again, and her assignments are as listed.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I'd like to mention that we don't get too many physics people, do we, Dr. Harris?
Yeah, not too often.
To be honest with you, we actually had two requests this year, which is.
Which is very, I mean, because they're in so much demand, and they just, they can pick the school they want to be a student teacher at. They're just, that's, that's excellent.
We had to turn somebody away this year.
Yeah, that's, that's hard to believe.
How many roughly do student teachers we take per year, Scott?
Oh, probably half a dozen or so. Yeah. All right, move to accept the following retirement resignations. Jaclyn Geible, Lee Esther Gongware, and Patricia Ludwig, as listed.
What's position number five? Question.
That's her time as a Penn Middle. Everyone has a different position when they're, when they're bidding. She currently holds position five as 11 to 7.
It's a time for any custodians working.
Oh, okay. All right, I wasn't familiar with that.
Any other questions?
I need a second. Give me a second. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
I just wanted to jump in there because usually we don't have retirements out early in this year, but I definitely feel the need to say something for all three.
Oh, go ahead, Matt.
Jackie Geible has been a music teacher at almost every school in the district, and we're really gonna miss her at the high school. She's also been at the, she's been at every school, the Penn Middle, the elementary school, and, you know, always wanted to give something different and unique to the schools. And Mr. Koye, do you have something?
Yeah, she's been great for us here with all she does with the choral department and the concerts and things, and good for, for kids, and not just as a teacher, but as a support person as well, so we will miss her.
I had a student, one year, I was trying to make sure, to get them to graduate, we was going through how to make sure they graduate, and she told me that the only reason, she said, "The only thing I can't change is her chorus schedule because that's the only reason she comes to school." So, and that was with Mrs. Geible as a teacher, so I do remember her telling me that. Lee Esther is actually Gigi Gongware. I always call her Gigi. It's always with Gigi. She's one of our technology assistants, and she is definitely gonna be missed. I've had her, this year, she's gonna have to write down everything that she does because I don't think no one knows exactly what Gigi does because she does so much, and it's all technology-based, and she puts a lot of extra hours into the job, and she volunteers also with like the theater department and gives a lot of herself to the job. And all my educational programs that are running, she's in charge of them. She's behind. We definitely need to give her a lot of things, and she will be missed. And Dan, is she at one of yours?
Yeah, she comes to both. She basically hits all the.
She does all the schools now.
Yeah.
She does everything. She's, she's.
No wonder she's retiring. Blamer, blamer.
She's put on the spot so many times, and she doesn't, you know, not a, not a bad.
She doesn't miss a beat.
Something comes out of her.
A lot on her shoulders. She fixes it all.
She even helped me with my phone when I was having different calls, so I do appreciate that. And Patty Lottwick, I mean, for her to take, she's retiring, she took the shift for, and the year has loved it, but the 11 to 7 shift, which is always a hard one, and with all her sorority, she never pretty much left at a Penn Middle, which Jim was here tonight. Did anyone else have Patty in her building? Probably not, because she's been pretty much with this position that very rarely is one of the person, people I don't actually see because it is 11 to 7. I'm not usually ever at Penn Middle at that time or the night, but during the summer hours when she's around, she always has a smile on her face, and she always wants to make the school better for the kids and make sure, or because they have, she has that philosophy where she's there to make the schools clean and safe environment for the kids, and she takes a lot of pride in her work. So, I, we also miss Patty, so we're losing three good ladies this year, unexpectedly so. Thank you, I just, I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's all right. You did, you did good. Okay, move to accept the following resignations. Marcus Beacon, Sandra Klein, April Loether, as listed.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following leave request. Maria Franz and Patricia Ludwig, as listed.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the Penn Trafford School Program Studies, 2019, 2000, I'm sorry, 20, 2019, 2020, I'm right, as presented to the board.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to adopt, to adopt the 2019-20 school calendar as recommended by the superintendent and make it part of the official minutes. The 2019-20 school year will begin an in-service meeting on Monday, April 19th, 2000.
August 19th.
I'm sorry, August season, too much, Nick, too speed. And will, August 19th, 2019 will officially terminate June 30th, 2020. The last day of instruction in grade K-11 will be Friday, May 22nd, 2020, unless it has become necessary to extend the school calendar because of weather conditions, emergencies, or other urgent reasons.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to adopt 2019-2020 service employees calendar and mark it part of the official minutes. The calendar with 248 working days and 14 paid holidays make a work year of 262 days. Yearly employees will be paid for 262 days, including the paid holidays. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
So, I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, Mr. Stovall.
A couple things. Move to accept and file the minutes of the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on November 5, 2018.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to appoint the following Recreation Board Representative, Penn Township Reps, Mr. Phil Kachasik and Dr. Scott Costo, Trafford Borough Rep.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to appoint the following as PTARC representatives, Mr. Nick Petrusi, Dr. Matthew Harris, Mr. Greg Capogli, Mr. Stan Raj, and Mr. Mike Ginsberg as an alternate.
Second.
I'm sorry. I also move to appoint Mr. Bill Leonard as the WIU Board Representative effective December 2018.
That's number four, Mark.
Yeah, but then there was nothing.
They're together.
Okay.
Here, you're all right.
It's fine.
It is second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to give final approval to the following Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. Copy of these policies and regulations will become an official part of the minute.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to tentatively approve the following Board Policies and Administrative Regulations, as listed.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.